Nice sweater.
Oh, thank you, John.
Everybody looks nice, including baby Yoda.
Good. Good morning, folks. People are coming into the room right now, so we're going to give it a few seconds. Um, since we opened the door, we want to give time for everybody to get through the door. Um, so hang out with us just for a few seconds and we will get started. Very soon. Good morning, everybody. Good to see some. Some familiar names and some new names. That's exciting. Have some new folks with us this morning. Okay, Commissioner, it looks like we've kind of had a slowdown of folks coming through the door, so. Why don't we go ahead and get started?
Great, Michelle. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Uh, welcome to the monthly Wellington, Waverly, Buckeye, and all points in between. Uh, our monthly community conversation. As you know, I'm John Kafalas. I'm the Commissioner from District One. In a moment, I'll turn it over to Michelle to, just to clarify how folks can participate, attendees. Our agenda for today is, um, we have all three commissioners here. We did a moment ago and, um. But, but the idea would be to, um, uh, introduce my colleagues, Kristen and Jody, and give them a chance to say a few words, uh, as, as much as they wish to share. And then, once they're done, I have some updates that I'd like to provide to folks. I'll try to get through that quickly. And then we'll basically open it up to, you know, what, what it is that, um, more information that you folks need or other questions or issues that you wish to. Wish to raise. So that's our agenda for today. And Michelle and colleagues, please remind me that. Before we end today's community conversation. I, I want to make sure I ask the question, are there any particular people, uh, with, uh, subject matter expertise? That you'd like us to invite for the next one, which would be, you know, the first Thursday in March. So I want to make sure I ask that question. So I'll turn it over to Michelle now. And, and again, thanks all, all of you for taking time on a Thursday morning. And I appreciate my fellow commissioners joining us. Michelle, would you give us the up, the, uh, information we need to participate in this meeting?
Of course. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Kafalas. Good morning, everybody. My name is Michelle Bird. I'm the Public Affairs Director here at Laramie County. And today I am your Zoom host, so that basically means I'm the IT help around this part. Um, you'll notice today we're using maybe a little bit of a different platform than some of you have used before. It's called Zoom webinar. It's a little different than. The typical Zoom meeting you use for work, or maybe you have happy hour with your friends these days via Zoom. Um, but you'll notice there's no chat box that you guys can, can access. Instead, you'll see there's a Q and A button at the bottom. Um, that's the primary way we tend to, we tend to, um, engage during these meetings. Is anytime you have a question, feel free to type it into that Q and A box. Over, that's not the only way. Um, you can also raise your hand. You'll notice that there's a, there's a raised hand feature there down at the bottom. If you want to chat with us, you'll just go ahead and, and click on that button and it'll let me know that you want to ask a question. And then I'll walk you through the steps of, of asking us the question. I do see that we have someone called in this morning, so you can participate as well. Um, if you want to ask us a question, just hit star nine. Um, and that'll let me know that you want to chat with us and I will then walk you through that process. So with that, Commissioner, I'll go back to you.
Great. Thank, thank you kindly, Michelle. Uh, as I said a moment ago, I'd like to now, uh, introduce my two Commissioner colleagues. Uh, Kristen Stevens and Jody Shadak McNally. Uh, I think we'll start with Kristen. And I will, um, you know, please introduce yourself and, and maybe share how the first month or so together has been, or actually three weeks. It's not been quite a month. Welcome, colleagues.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Kafalas. And, um, hello, everyone. I'm Kristen Stevens and I was elected in November to, uh, serve District Two as a County Commissioner in Laramie County. I'm really honored to, um, receive, uh, the votes to be able to represent, uh, folks in Laramie County. Uh, before serving in this position, I was on the Fort Collins City Council for almost six years. I served as a council member for District Four, so I live in southwest Fort Collins. And, um, also served as the Mayor Pro Town for the past couple of years. So, um, I think that it's been great. Uh, you know, it's weird getting elected in November and then waiting a couple of months to start your job. So I was winding down my position on City Council and I worked at CSU. Um, and now embarking on the exciting adventure of being a Laramie County Commissioner. And I think that, you know, John, uh, was asking about the past four weeks, how those have been and. I know there's been a, it's been good. It's been a, a big learning, uh, curve. It's been. You know, it's kind of like anyone who's started a new job, you know, you're learning where the restrooms are and how to print stuff out on the. Printer and, and, you know, get your bearings and, and, and trying to learn a new job, but. Hopefully, um, I'm a quick learner and, and will, um, have done a lot of reading and so, and really enjoying the work. And we had updates yesterday about, um, about the fire and about the work that's being done on mitigation and helping folks get back on their feet. Um, because of the fires. And so, you know, there are a lot of big issues that we're dealing with, clearly with COVID and the fires and. And then, you know, the state of the economy and so, um. You know, along with many other issues, but I'm happy to be here today to listen to what you have to say and. And see how we can help you and if we can get some of your questions answered, but. Um, yeah, just delighted to, to be here early this morning to, uh, to see what folks, um, have on their minds. So thanks for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kafalas and Chris, and Commissioner Stevens. Michelle Bird, thank you for facilitating this this morning. Um, welcome, everyone. I have attended these in the past. Excuse me, and I'm very excited to be here again. My name is Jody Shig McNally. I'm the Commissioner for District Three. Um, as you know, we all, you vote for all the commissioners in all the whole, um, county, and so I'm very, I'm proud to. Also feel I represent you all as well, and I'm very glad to be here this morning to listen and learn and I'm always available and accessible to you all. Um, to have any questions. Um. I feel our first three weeks has been great. Um, I always joke that there is no honeymoon phase with this job. Which is great. I think we got sworn in an hour later, we were in a meeting voting and making decisions and I'm very, um, excited and proud. Um, to do that work and I feel really good about the work we've been doing. Um, some of the, um. The subject matters I've already been following for the last four years through my work in the Behavioral Health Center. To get that initiative passed and the work I've done on Office on Aging and other, um, the, the comprehensive meetings I've been attending, um, through the process through 2017 and on. And so, um, I feel really good about what we've been, um, doing and talking about. And gelling together as a team of Board of County Commissioners. Um, I've read through, well, I think I've read through probably about eight hundred emails in the last two weeks. Um, so it just know that if you email me and I don't get back to you, um, it's, I have a lot of emails, but also it's because some of the subject matter. I cannot, um, respond to your email because it's due to the matter being litigation. And we've been advised and that if we want to maintain our ability to vote. As a Board of County Commissioner on some of those subject matters, that we're not able to reply to that since it is in litigation. Also, um, I've talked to, um, dozens of folks over the last three weeks about their concerns over the phone. Um, and I'm really glad to make that contact with constituents. And they have been from all over the county. So thank you for contacting me. I, I really appreciate hearing from you and hearing about your concerns. And your ideas and thoughts. And again, Commissioner Kafalas, thank you for inviting us to your community conversation this morning. I'm really proud to be here. And to be with, um, Chris, Commissioner Stevens. Sorry, Kristen. I'm used to calling you Kristen. Um, and I'm just really glad to get to work with, um, these two great folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh. I think we'll go with first name basis for, for now. Uh, thank you, uh, Jody and Kristen. I appreciate that. And I, I'd like to spend a little bit of time updating folks on some things that I think you'll be interested to know about. And then, well, as I said, we'll open it up and now you've got all three of us here who can, uh, respond to your questions. Or, or, uh, make sure that we follow up with, uh, you know, informed answers. You know, one thing I, off the bat, I'd like to quickly mention is that, um. One of the things that the three of us need to do, actually with Michelle Bird, our Public Affairs Director, is to, uh, spend a little more time. Uh, thinking about our overall, uh, strategy for community outreach. I know that each of us is going to, has already begun, and I've been doing this, you know, individual, uh, listening sessions or community conversations. But we want to have a conversation about that and determine, you know, what's the best way to connect with folks. Uh, you know, we used to do town halls where the three of us would be present, uh, back in the day, like at the public libraries. So if you have any thoughts or inputs, uh, input on, on how we can best, um, interact with folks in the community, please let us know. And that would inform our conversation about community outreach. And, and, and so with that said. The first thing I'd like to mention as far as by way of update is that. If you haven't already read the newspaper, uh, in terms of COVID-19, uh, our overall, our key metrics. Relating to hospitalizations, relating to, uh, what's referred to as the positivity rate. And, and then the, um, the incidence rate per hundred thousand, positive cases per hundred thousand. Those metrics have been trending in a very good direction. And because of that, because we've been below that three hundred and fifty per hundred thousand threshold, as of yesterday. Uh, over three hundred businesses, including restaurants and other kinds of businesses. Three hundred and thirty, um, that have been certified through our Level Up Program. And I believe that includes businesses, of course, in the town of Wellington. But those businesses can now operate at a level yellow, uh, the next level down. Which basically means that they can, if it's a restaurant, for example, they can operate at a higher capacity. Rather than up to twenty-five percent, it's up to fifty percent. And, uh, they can't exceed a hundred folks indoors, indoors, uh, not under a heat lamp necessarily. Um, and, and so that's, I think that's a big deal. And, and again, all of our numbers and our public health numbers. Are, are very, are very good in terms of moving in, in the direction. Our, um. Our fourteen day positivity rate, I, it went below five percent. I think we're at four point eight percent. And overall, since the pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic started in Laramie County on March ninth. Uh, we're at, I think we're at like six point two percent or something, but maybe actually lower. So that's, in my view, that's obviously very good news. The second quick update is regarding, um, uh, the Cameron Peak Fire, uh, recovery. And, um, in terms of the work of our Office of Emergency Management and our Director Lori Hodges. Uh, the good news is that, um, we were approved, at least partially, for a FEMA, uh, well, ma- major disaster declaration. And that basically allowed the, the county to work with the state and the feds, uh, to access what are called public assistance funds. Uh, to help with, you know, some of the public infrastructure issues related to the Cameron Peak Fire. Uh, we learned yesterday in a work session that was broadcast and, you know, you can access that if you like. That was at, um, two thirty yesterday. Uh, we had a really good presentation, but a lot of the focus is going to be on, on debris removal. Uh, dead, dead and hazardous trees that might, uh, you know, create blockages in, in some of our, uh, water bodies, our streams and our rivers. So, so that's, that's important and there's, there are more details to that. But we are making progress on securing the necessary resources, you know, to help with, um. Uh, recovery efforts related to the Cameron Peak Fires. And we're, we're also looking at other kinds of, uh, programs that are available for, um, uh, emergency, uh. Uh, protection of our watershed, their watershed programs and a variety of other things. So that's the second update. Uh, regarding the, um, what we call the strategic plan, uh, the five-year strategic plan. I, I just wanted to share a little bit about that. And, and I think folks know that, uh, for example. I am the, uh, what's considered the executive sponsor, the commissioner sponsor of goal number two. Which deals with economic opportunities. Uh, goal number one is infrastructure and that's, I believe that's, that's Jody, right? Yeah, Jody Shadak McNally, goal number one. And then goal number three, uh, deals with, how do we innovate in terms of providing services? Uh, you know, to folks as, as our demographics and our population change. But on goal number two, there are four objectives. One of them deals with affordable housing. And we've made a lot of progress in terms of our affordable housing objective. But the thing I want to share with you and perhaps Michelle can put this link in the, uh, uh, in the, um, in the chat. Is that, um, and it's in the newspaper today, but we are doing a concerted outreach effort. We have this survey. It takes about ten minutes to complete. But it's, it's really seeking input from all sectors of our community about affordable housing challenges. And, and ideas that folks have on, you know, on, on solutions. That particular survey, there's a group that we're working with out of Denver called the Roots, uh, Policy. Uh, or, organization and they do a lot of policy analysis and they've been working with us to determine, you know, what is the proper role? For, um, for the county to help address some of these things. And, and, uh, thanks to Michelle, she put in that link. Uh, laramer.housingimpactlab.com or something like that. So please take the time, uh, to complete that survey. Please share that with other folks. We really want to hear from urban and rural folks. You know, what are some of the issues related to housing? And we all know that, um, that's a serious, you know, whether it's on, it's a serious issue, whether it's on the rental side of things. Or certainly on the homeownership side of things. And that survey will be live, uh, through the month of February. Uh, so, so I wanted to share that. And, um, and, and definitely there's other progress that's happening, you know, within goal number two on econo- uh, economic opportunities. Goal number one, and I don't want to steal any thunder away from Jody, but the thing I wanted to mention there in particular. That's relevant for folks in Wellington is that on Monday at a work session, uh, as part of goal number one, objective number four. We received an update on the, um. On the Box Elder, um, uh, the, the Box Elder B dams. And, and many of you know that, um, there are various dams that were built back in the seventies and early eighties. Their flood control dam. So we received the works, uh, an update on that and there's really good progress. And of course, Wellington has been part of that stakeholder group. But the essence of that is that, um. Initial analyses that determine we were going to have to spend, uh, you know, because Wellington, the population of Wellington has grown dramatically. Uh, and, and originally these, these, uh, flood control dams were built, uh, to help, um, protect farmers and ranchers. Uh, from any, uh, a hundred-year flood type event, event, but the risk assessment was increased, you know, high hazard dams. You know, primarily because of the population growth up in that part of the, the county. Uh, there, there were, uh, further analyses and then the, um. The state also looked at some different kinds of modeling. But ultimately, in going, instead of, uh, having to spend millions and millions of dollars, uh, to, um. Make sure that these dams would not breach in the, in the event of a hundred-year flood. Uh, now we're looking at, uh, hundreds of thousands, two hundred thousand dollars to install monitoring equipment. And then about a twenty-five thousand dollar price tag to maintain this monitoring equipment. So. You know, one of the next steps is to work out an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Wellington. And the other towns and cities that are part of this Timmyth, Fort Collins. So I wanted, you know, I wanted folks to have an update on that. I think there's a lot of good news there. And again, we're talking about, uh, the B-two dam, which is on the Box Elder Creek, the B-three dam, which is on Coal Creek, and then the B-four. Uh, dam, which is on Indian Creek. So, so there is some progress there. Um, uh, the, the only other things I'd like to mention really quick is, uh, um, let's see. We also had a work session this week. We've had a lot of work sessions this week. But something that I think is of interest to folks is, um, the work we're doing in the, in the Behavioral Health Services arena. And again, Jody is on the, uh, Behavioral Health Policy Council as a Commissioner and she can speak to all of this, but, um. Uh, we, we had a, a work session and there's another effort underway and you'll learn more about that down the road. Uh, but the effort is to look at the Behavioral Health Facility, you know, which, uh, which is, with the construction on that will begin. Uh, in, I think in March of this year. And, and if all goes well, uh, the, the goal is to have that operational by. Uh, I think the fall of twenty twenty-two or sometime in twenty twenty-two. But what we're undertaking is, um, wanting to get community input on, on ideas for naming the facility. And the overall branding of, of, you know, the, um, the Behavioral Health Services that we'll be providing. We, we want to make sure, of course, that it reflects, you know, the community, because the voters approve the, the money for this. And, and is it reflecting adequately, inclusively, the, the, the values and priorities of our community? So that's, that's really cool. And on the. Another topic is the solid waste recovery. And, uh, you know, Kristen serves with me on the, um, Policy Council there, but. The, one quick update there, colleagues, and, and we could invite this person to the next meeting if you're interested. But we now have hired a Director of our Solid Waste Department. And, um, and, and so that person is on board. You know, we haven't met him yet, but we will be meeting him soon. And we are making progress with, um. Uh, you know, the, the, the master plan, this, the solid waste master plan. And in particular, you know, we had a groundbreaking for the transfer station on Trilby Road. And we're moving forward with, uh, other quote tier-one projects. And of course, uh, you know, one of the things I asked for recently was to get an update on. On, um, on how we're addressing the, the transportation issues, uh, related to, uh. Trash hauling trucks that would bring trash from the, uh, you know, the transfer station on Trilby. Up to the, the new landfill site. And, and we certainly can answer questions on that. And then last but not least, and so much for being brief, but I, I tried. Um, i- i- it's also important for folks to know, and I know that Fire Chief Green is on, on the, on the, um. On the meeting and he is a member of our Laramie County, uh, Planning Commission. Uh, but we are going to be starting, uh, the process of the Phase Two of updating the land use code. And, and there will be opportunities for the community to engage because that's really important to us. I think it's important to all levels of government that folks have a chance to engage. But we are going to be starting that. And one step in that process, well, there's been a lot of stuff already happening. But one step in that process is that, uh, there is a joint work session next, um, Wednesday, February tenth, I believe. In the evening, uh, between, with the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. And we'll get a, a more detailed, um. A presentation on, on some of the next steps involved with, uh, you know, working through Phase Two. And that deals with. Everything from diversity of housing options, you know, to landscaping. I mean, a variety of things. And, um, that would be the last thing I'll share with you. Well, that's all I have. And at this time, I think it would be, uh, if folks, I know there are some, there's at least one question in the chat or there's a link there. And there's some Q and A. Michelle, can you help us out here?
Absolutely, Commissioner. And I, I, I'm already getting a couple of questions in regard to NISP. So I think we should, um, address that first. So, um, as I'm sure many of you know, um, the NISP decision has gone into litigation. Um, so because of that reason, the commissioners specifically cannot comment or have discussions about that decision. Um, I see two, two here that, one specifically, um, that wants an update on NISP. Um, so I just want you guys to know, it's not that the commissioners are avoiding the conversation. Um, they, they just cannot comment on subjects that are in, in litigation right now. Um, and it's for very good reason. It's, it's so that they can, um. Maintain the ability to make a decision, um, if, if it were ever to come back. So, um, Sheri, you had asked that question about NISP. Um, and so I just. We're not ignoring you. We recognize that you asked the question, um, and they just, they can't, um, talk about that right now. And Gail kind of had a two-part question. Um, it looks like, um, she did ask a little bit about NISP, so we'll skip over that. But I think it's valid to recognize, um, kind of the first part, which is she's very concerned about water issues. And agricultural survival because of the needs of growing cities, especially Wellington. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that that viewpoint got out there and, and she was heard that way. She doesn't necessarily have a question. Um, I'll skip over the NISP part, but go ahead.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll quickly comment and then Jody, if you want to add anything, but. What I was going to say in response to, to Gail's comment, or at least the second part, is that, um. In our strategic plan, in that goal number one that deals with infrastructure. In objective number four, which includes the, um, you know, resolving the matters with the B dams. Uh, there's also another, in objective four, which deals with watersheds and water storage and flood control and all of that kind of stuff. There is, um, um, an item in there that, uh, deals with, um, exploring and, and looking at ideas related to water sharing agreements. And, and so, with certainly water infrastructure, water quantity, water quality are part of the five-year strategic plan. And I can, I, I, correct me if I'm, I'm not right here, Jody or, or Michelle or Kristen. I believe, um, so on these three goals, we're getting these updates. We get these quarterly updates. And we just had one on the, on the housing stuff and the goal number two. But, uh, goal number one on infrastructure, uh, and you can go to us, our website, and I bet Michelle will put up the strategic plan link. Uh, but it, the, the next update is on goal number one, and that is scheduled for February twenty-second, I believe. I, I believe it's in the afternoon or something. But, but folks can, can look at that and, um. And listen in and, and gal, but see if, how adequately that, you know, our efforts are addressing some of the questions that you raise about. What, you know, water storage and things of that nature. I, I, I hope that's helpful.
Sorry, Commissioner. So many buttons during these Zoom meetings. Okay, so I don't see any other questions open at the moment. So I'm looking at my participant list to see if anybody has their hand raised. I don't see any yet. Um, oh, Clayton Roth has his hand raised. So Clayton, what I'm going to do, I'm pressing the allow you to talk button. And now you're going to have to unmute yourself, Clayton.
Okay. I think so. You might, my kid on that ground. So, um. So I just wanted to kind of touch base with the commissioners on, uh, the regards to the Horton Feed Lot up there. Um, since, uh, litigation is over and that, uh, you know, we kind of went through, uh. The twenty eighteen land use approval and that was overturned, uh, in both the District Court and the Colorado Court of Appeals. And the nineteen seventy-eight special use permit is now ruling once again. Uh, you know, that, that, uh, we're still having, you know, major, uh, issues concerning the dust and. Uh, they're over their ninety-five hundred head count and there's no sprinkler system. I mean, it's very miniscule. There's only. You know, five or six sprinklers and, and, you know, in their application, it says that there's supposed to be a sprinkler in each pen. And they added onsite housing, um, even after, uh, you know, that was added to. Uh, the land use code in the year two thousand when they adopted the land use code. And, uh, there's off-site wastewater ponds. Uh, there's off-site freshwater, uh, holding facility, uh, that's very large. I think it's like thirty-five acres. Um, they also have a model years airfield onsite, which is like a. Community facility that they can, uh, fly like radio-controlled airplanes at. Uh, there's multiple small feed yards located, uh, around the feed lot on separate parcels. Um, you know, that hold, you know, three or four hundred head and, uh, are on separate parcels and they're all confined. It's not like they're grazing and. There's, uh, they've recently been cleaning out their wastewater ponds that are located offsite, which are supposed to be located onsite. And, uh, they've totally destroyed the road surface. I mean. Uh, I know one of my neighbors was like even concerned about driving her car down it because of how destroyed the road surfaces. I mean, they've been hauling, uh, hauling the sediment out of that pond. Um, you know, it, it, uh. You know, like a hundred. Carts of the stuff per day. Um, and you know, they, they, I recently saw that they had a, uh, another individual living off. Or on, in a fifth-wheel trailer on their site, kind of. So I don't know if that's an employee or what the deal is, but it's been there for a couple of months and. And I just was wondering if the commissioners had any comments on that or, uh, you know, if, if this is on your guys' radar at all.
I imagine I'd be the first one to respond. Hello, Clayton. Nice to hear your voice. And as I mentioned. In, um, my text response to you, I'd be interested, I mean, you've just shared some of the concerns you have. I'd be interested to, um, you know, get your current thoughts on, on how we're going to address some of that. I. I know that you've, I believe you've reached out to both Kristen and Jody and they can certainly speak for themselves. Uh, and I also mentioned this to our Director of, um, uh, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources, Lori Cadridge said. You know, you've reached out and I appreciate your, your due diligence on this. So number one, it, it would be helpful to. Uh, you know, get your current idea, you know, your thoughts on what, you know, what are the, you know, we've, we've been talking about this. I've got a. I've, I've tried to be supportive of your efforts. I'm also mindful of, of, um, the, the Horton Feed Lot, you know, as a business. And what, what, what they do. Uh, so that would be very helpful. And, and I'm more than willing to discuss it more with my Commissioner colleagues. And, and maybe there's, we, we need to have a work session to get them totally up to speed on what's happening. And then what might some of the options be, you know, in terms of finding an equitable solution to this problem? You know, for example, Clayton, and we've talked about this a lot and, and, um. You know, for example, Clayton, and we've talked about this a lot and, and um, but still it's, you know, the concerns are still the ones that you've shared uh, on the dust issue. Um, you know, regardless of interpretations of special reviews and all that, it seems like there might be some kind of a, a, a way to address some of those dust issues. When I went out, as you know, I, I didn't time it right. Uh, there wasn't really uh, much of a problem with dust, but I know that certainly on windy days, that can be a real big issue. But when I went out to visit you at your house and, and all of that. So that's my response, Clayton. I hope that's adequate right at this moment. And, and I don't know if the other commissioners want to sh- share anything. Uh, yeah, Jody, yes, of course.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Cofalas John. Um, thank you, Clayton, for coming this morning. And um, it sounds to me like you've shared some new concerns, especially with the off-site um, water treatment and hauling. Um, I didn't know if, there's a lot of things here that maybe you could um, put those all in an email. I know you're really busy um, with your family and stuff. If you could put those in a quick email to all three of us. And then maybe we can pass um, that along to our, our staff director. And, and then I, I agree with Commissioner Cofalas. Maybe it's time for a, um, a meeting, uh, work session. So we can um, take your concerns and get up, you know, kind of um, have this conversation, the three of us.
And yeah, and Clayton, I, I, I know that um, you know, some of the more recent emails that you and I have exchanged, you know, you did outline your ideas on, on some possible options moving forward. I don't know if anything has changed from that previous information, but I, if, if you agree, I think it would be helpful to, you know, get the latest, greatest, yeah, and.
I can, I have something up for you guys, and I'll give you guys some reference. And, and you know, another thing I'd like you guys to keep in mind too is that, uh, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information here, and then there's a lot of historic information too. And you know, a lot of the new decisions that the county's been rendering in the last five years don't align with a lot of the old decisions. And I'd like to kind of get through some of those contradicting uh, uh, you know, issues because, you know, previously we had a feed lot that had to go through a special use application for twenty-five hundred head. And, and now they just say that, yeah, well, it's allowed by right to have, you know, an additional six or seven thousand-headed cows there. And that doesn't align with, with what uh, you know, was the previous determinations on that, you know, as well as other special reviews such as uh, like the Spark Special Review, you know, they had the, they had thirty-five acres of property of, of farm ground there and they only overwintered their cattle there. And they went through a special use permit for three hundred head of cows. And you know, that's uh, that's a lot different than the decisions that the county's been rendering down the last five years. And the definition has not changed. So I'm just wondering why the interpretation has changed. And you know, those are some things that I think that we really need to work through and, and maybe that you guys need to discuss as commissioners, as well as the county, because uh, I think it would be all fair to have the county issue, uh, you know, render the same decisions based off the same definition rather than reinterpreting it and issuing different decisions um, based upon that determination. So uh, I'll kind of encapsulate all this and send it to you guys in an email. And then uh, that'll give you guys something to reference.
Clayton, thank you very much for, you've been pretty patient on your end. And, and again, I've, you know, I, part of our job is to try to make sure we understand a complex issue from all perspectives. And as I mentioned, uh, you know, I visited with you and I'm happy to visit again. Uh, you could try to get me out there on a windy day. Uh, I've also, you know, both Lori Cadridge and I went out to the, you know, the Feed Lot site and walked around there. Um, and, and again, like, for example, no sprinkler systems. I, I know that that was one of the original uh, conditions of approval. And, and, and not to get into it right now, because I know there are at least two other questions that folks have raised on vaccines and, and the vision for the county. But um, uh, a- a- as we've discussed before, you know, the original pens, they do have, you know, they do have sprinkler systems. But I, I also on some of the newer pens, you know, they made the decisions to a different kind of way of, of trying to address some of the dust issues in, in terms of the, the fences, the, the fencing. But, but looking forward to your email, looking forward to engaging our planning folks and, and then getting these folks up to speed and seeing how we can revisit this thing and figure out, you know, way forward. I hope, I hope that's okay, Clayton.
Yeah, no, it sounds great. I mean, let's base on that and, and uh, we'll kind of go from there. I really appreciate you guys' time.
And I, we appreciate your time. Well, I am noticing, Michelle, that um, there was a question from Gail Meisner. And I'm really glad she brought it up and I'm, I'm glad she brought up the water storage question as well. But Gail is referencing that um, a, a seventy-year-old family member, I think, of, yes, is.
Do you want me to read it out, Commissioner?
Yeah, please help me out there, Michelle.
Sure. Um, Gail, Gail says that none of my family have been notified to receive a COVID vaccine, even though two are over seventy.
And I, I can offer a response there, but I wonder, Kristen, do you want to? Do you want to take this one?
Sure, I'll try. And if I, and if I am not giving correct information, please, please feel free to correct me. Um, you know, I think that we had an update on, I think was, must have been Tuesday about, you know, the vaccine rollout. And it looks like, you know, we are trying to get, you know, everybody, but we're, we're not quite there yet. And so I, I, I don't know, Gail, if you have had an opportunity to sort of register on the website. Um, that we can, I think that Michelle could put uh, the, either the phone number or the link to the website on. Because if people are sort of registered and haven't received a call about getting the, the vaccine, then uh, the county can kind of look into it and help you navigate that, that system. So um, you know, I know some people have received it through wherever they go, you know, their medical system. So if you're like in UC Health or you're in Kaiser, you, you know, you may have gone through those routes. Um, or Salud also has, you know, vaccines, but um, but please um, you know, give them a call or they, they're even willing to text um, and, 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 and kind of walk people through that process. And I, I want to say that maybe about thirty-five percent of people over seventy have received the vaccine at this point. So you're, I mean, not that this is any consolation, but you're not alone in that. Um, and I know we're getting about, I want to say six thousand to seven thousand vaccines a week that um, we are getting into folks' arms the minute they come into our county. So we're not wasting any, but the process is slow. And so um, but we, but Michelle did put in those, those website um, websites. And then if you're more comfortable talking on the phone, um, that, that number's there as well. But um, if you have been on a list for two or three weeks and you still haven't heard anything, please do call or contact them in some way. Uh, because they, they do want to hear from folks that maybe, maybe they have a wrong number for you. Maybe they have some, you know, information that's not um, you know, current or some, there, there might be some mitigating reason, mitigating circumstances why they haven't called you. So uh, I know it's hard to be persistent and it, it's really easy to be frustrated with this system. Um, my mom is eighty. She just got her shot uh, last week or a couple of days ago, actually. And so um, i- it is a slower process, but, but our intention is to get your shots. So um, if you continue to have um, you know, some issues, I mean, I feel free to email me and I'm happy to, you know, do what I can to intervene as well. Um, but it's a slower rollout than we want for sure. And yet we are really trying to um, you know, get these vaccines out as soon as they come to us.
Yeah, Jody, something you want to add?
Um, thank you, Kristen. You are correct on a lot of those um, issues. I want to add to that, that um, um, the state and the federal government have promised to kind of, we'll see if it happens. But they've promised to increase the amount of vaccines we receive because we get those from the federal government. And then the state, to the state and the state processes out to the counties. And so we get, we get that allotment of six thousand, but we've been told that over the next three weeks during this week and through the beginning of March, we should see an increase of sixteen percent per week of vaccines handed out. So I'm hopeful that that list of seventy-plus um, gets through a little quicker. I did have several folks, um, like I said, took a lot of phone calls over the weekend and talked to constituents. And a lot of them were on the vaccine issue, excuse me. And so those folks yesterday, um, they had been on the, the system for weeks. And um, about four or five of them texted me or called me yesterday and said, guess what? I got my call today. So I felt that was a hopeful sign. Um, I did um, hear and see there's um, some photos. They started a drive-through clinic out at their ranch and that went very well with the kind of the first rollout. And all that information is on the website. So um, I think um, I know it's hard to be, it, all of us, I haven't got my vaccine, my, my um, family members work in the air, so I have some family members vaccinated. Um, and it's hard to be patient, but I know they're doing, they're working very hard in seven days a week trying everything they can to get shots into arms and get as many folks vaccinated as possible, especially our older population who are at higher risk. So thanks for that question, though. I'm glad you asked that today. Thanks.
And I would just simply add that um, uh, I, I concur, of course, with my colleagues here. But it's also, what I've understood to Gail and co, and, and friends, is that um, the website, you know, the link for, to, to get into the, into the database is important. There's also another link on that vaccine information website, which is for agencies. So for example, if you're um, you know, I, for example, I received an email with the Rist Canyon Volunteer Fire District uh, that they had been in the queue for a long time. And uh, uh, they hadn't heard and they're, you know, they're frontline first responders. And, and so there is an opportunity for agencies to uh, register to make sure they're in the queue. And then in this case, we did confirm that they were and that they would be getting their vaccinations. And I know, I think Gary Green is still on from the, you know, Wellington Fire District, uh, Fire Protection District. So I wanted to add that. And also my understanding too is it doesn't hurt if, if um, the family members in your, that are seventy-plus, which is the Phase One A, it does, you know, you know, registering or going into the, the county data um, link that, that has been posted, but also contacting your healthcare provider. Uh, and, and, and so there's multiple ways to make sure. And then as Kristen and Jody have suggested, if, if, if there's a proper role for us to help you out, you know, make sure you get through some of this. And you know, that they've changed the whole vaccination prioritization thing. And so we're, you know, with Phase One A, as you all know, the, the emphasis is bent on getting the frontline, the folks who have the most, the most potential for contact with COVID nineteen, the healthcare workers. And I think we've covered that and, and it, you know, pretty much gotten most of those folks vaccinated. Uh, another high priority was uh, the, the, the people, the residents in skilled nursing facilities or, or, or nursing homes. Uh, and I think there are fifty-four in Lammert County and, and most of those folks have gotten their vaccinations, you know, first doses. And I think a chunk of those folks have gotten their second doses. And then the seventy-plus, but the changes to the prioritization, now we have, we're entering into Phase One B. And now there's One B one and One B two and all this other stuff. But as of next Monday, February eighth, uh, it, it looks like because we have more certainty about vaccine supplies, et cetera, we'll be looking at um, still getting the seventy-plus folks vaccinated, first and second doses. But now we'll be opening it up to um, sixty-five to seventy a- as well as um, uh, school teachers, uh, as well as childcare workers, as well as um, uh, essential workers. And, and hoping we get, you know, closer to um, uh, people who work in grocery stores, for example. They're, they're at great risk and, and I, we've received some emails, you know, there's an equity issue here. So I, I wanted to share that and I appreciate that question. I'm glad, again, because the vaccine thing is really important and I think that's what we need to keep doing, along with our public health stuff, uh, to keep the, the numbers going better and, and making sure that people aren't getting sick from COVID. I mean, we've had two, we're now at two hundred and one deaths. Uh, most of those folks are people that are seventy and older, and that's why, you know, we've been focusing on that cohort of people. If I may, Michelle, the, the next question I think I saw in the Q and A was from Lynne Warden. And she asked about the uh, the vision of Lammert County. Isn't that right, Michelle?
You are correct.
Well, I think the, the best way to answer that, Lynne, is um, uh, I think, as you know, that um, the, the, the Board of Commissioners, certainly the previous board in, in July of two thousand and nineteen, I believe it was, we approved and adopted the updated comprehensive plan, the master plan. And, and that's that, you know, that's, that informs our land use code update. And that's kind of the visionary document, you know, where do we want to see the county in twenty years? So I would um, refer you to that document. And, and um, you know, what was identified through a two-and-a-half-year process that informed the adoption of that ma- updated master plan uh, was a lot of community input from folks down on the front range and certainly folks up in the, in the mountain communities. But the six areas that were identified uh, include community, the economy, health and social, housing, infrastructure, watersheds and natural resources. And if you go to the comp plan document, you'll see an awful lot of details, uh, you know, policy details about those six areas. And so for example, you'll see that one of the identified um, uh, community issues is housing. And, and so that is informing uh, how we update our land use code as it relates to, you know, um, uh, affordable housing, you know, can we incentivize uh, smaller square foot, footage homes? Uh, can we revisit the whole idea of accessory dwelling units, you know, a variety of other things as it relates to the land use code and also as it relates to the county uh, potentially putting more skin in the game with money? Uh, you know, we have set aside some dollars to look at childcare, to look at housing and, and to look at um, uh, you know, post-secondary education training opportunities. So that's, that's my answer to that question is that the comp plan is really the, the, the best thing to see what the vision is. Uh, and, and that's where we want to see the darn county in twenty years and as we get there. Are there other things, Michelle?
Yes. Commissioner, we have two other questions. So I'm not sure if Kent here has a comment. I'm not sure if it's a question so much, but of course I'll allow you guys to respond. Um, not a question, but regards to road damage. So we were talking earlier about road damage um, with regards to the feed lot. Um, when the county grades the road, the substandard debris will get incorporated with the road base and deteriorate the road further. Not sure if you have any response to that, Commissioner?
Uh, could you repeat that again, Michelle?
Absolutely. Let me pull it back up here.
Thank you, gosh.
Um, in regards to road damage, when the county grades the road, the substandard debris will get incorporated with the road base and deteriorate the road further.
Well.
Not, not really a question, but a comment.
If Kent wants to reframe that as a question, then my response would be um, that's an example of a question that it would be best to refer to a, a subject matter expert. And that would be our Director of Roads, Road and Bridges, Todd Jergens, who I'm su- sure could answer um, or comment on that statement or answer any question uh, much better than I can.
So the next question is from William. William says, we are located in the Waverly area and zoned agriculture. What are the options for Wellington as they consider reaching out for zoning or extending into city limits? Not sure. I one hundred percent follow that, but I'm hoping you do, Commissioner.
Well, yes, uh, me too. And, and again, if there are things that we're not adequately answering, um, you know, we can follow up, but I think that's frankly a question for the, the, I don't know, there's at least one person from the town of Wellington. There's Patty Garcia. Uh, it, it's a question for her to respond to more directly. But what I would, what I would say is that as part of the adoption of the um, Phase One of the land use code, we also adopted some changes to the uh, zoning districts. And, and I know we've created, you know, some flexibility for places like Waverly. But I'll stop there and, and, and again, all of this information about the land use code.
I need to talk.
Zoning districts are um, on our website and the planning website. Patty, please, thank you.
You bet. Was I unmuted all that time? No, okay, sorry. No, I have family here and I'm like, guys, be quiet. I need to talk.
It's all good, but please identify yourself.
So I think this question is Patty Garcia, Wellington Town Administrator. And um, I think the question is coming up because of, uh, we had something recently on the town board agenda related to the three-mile zone for annexations. And there's been some confusion about what that means and, and what are, what we um, can and cannot do. And so there has been enough um, um, requests from the citizens that will be presenting that separately um, at about, at a Board of Trustees. at about, at a Board of Trustees work session so that the community can understand exactly what that means and how that could impact them. So that's, that's what it's generating from is that three mile annexation sound. So we're, we're addressing that at a, at our staff level so we can bring it forward to the community.
Thank you, Patty. That's very helpful. I wonder when you'll be bringing this up at one of your next town board meetings. Could you let me know? And if possible, maybe I could, I could participate and listen so I better understand about this three mile annexation area?
Absolutely, absolutely. I will get you added on.
Gosh, thank you, Patty. And thank you for that answer. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Always nice to have someone jump in and save us, right? Our next, and it's, again, this isn't necessarily a question, but, but a statement and hopefully you guys want to respond. Gail says, I hope the two new commissioners will become involved in the Ag Advisory Board in order to become educated about the Ag issues in Lammerton County.
Yes, of course, Jody. Yeah, go for it.
It's, it's kind of interesting. I guess I plan to keep up on that board. I know Commissioner Kavals will bring us up to date on the issues. Him and I both were interested. Unfortunately, we all can't be on all the boards and commissions, but it was one that I was interested in as liaison and too. So it is one that's important to me. I am a landowner. I live west in unincorporated Lammerton County and I have ag land around me. And my husband and I try to quote unquote farm, but actually I think we're trying to be more gardeners sometimes with about a half acre. And so we lease some water from a nearby ditch and all those other things. So I, I am a little bit familiar with that. I'm friends with many folks around the county that have agricultural businesses and, and, you know, in the industry. And I have attended some of the Farmer Alliance meetings over the last two or three years. So I've been in contact with them. So, but yes, I would like to stay apprised and I'll probably try to read the minutes. And maybe I get on that email list so I can stay up to, maybe Michelle, you can add me to their email list so I can stay up to breast. But I know Commissioner Kavals will do a great job as liaison and keep us abreast of what's going on. But feel free to reach out if there's some issues you want me to take a closer look at.
Yeah, Kristin.
I'll be quick, but thank you, Gail. And you're, you know, absolutely am interested in these issues and want to be up to speed on that. And again, like Jody, happy to have a conversation with you and happy to follow what's happening on the Ag Board. I don't have land. I do live in the city, so I have a decent amount to learn. But, but it's important to me that we, you know, conserve ag lands. And so, you know, I will make sure that I'm, I'm keeping that in mind and that I'm making sure that I kind of keep up to date on the issues that are concerning folks in Ag.
And I would just say that the next, you know, the Ag Advisory Board meets every two months. And I, I don't remember off the top of my head, the next meeting is, but it's in March, early March. And one of our guests will be the Director of Natural Resources, Daleen Figs, and I think Megan Planikin, that deals with our open space. Because one of the issues, and Gail knows this, when she served for many years on the Ag Advisory Board, and thank you for your service there. But one of the issues is how do we improve communication where it makes sense between, you know, for example, Ag Advisory, the Open Lands Advisory Board, and then another board that I, I, I switched from the Land Stewardship Advisory Board, which deals with noxious weed management, to the Parks Advisory Board. And I attended my first meeting the, the other night, maybe it was Tuesday night. And so, so we, you know, we, yeah, and these folks, obviously they're interested in, and that is part of our vision. You know, our vision for the county is that we do what we can to protect working farms and ranches. And that is actually included in our open space or master plan. Thank you, Gail.
And just for your information, that meeting is on March the tenth at twelve thirty.
Gosh, yeah, March the tenth. And, and again, all of these meetings, they, they have a public common component. And there are ways to get the link and participate. And of course, Gail knows how to do that. Thank you.
So I am not seeing any open questions and I am going to look to my participant list to see if I have any hands raised. And I don't see any at the moment, so I don't know if there's anything else you want to do. Oh, we got one. It always, whenever I say that, we get one, we get one. So it looks like Paul has a question and Paul, I, you're going to have to unmute yourself now. Go ahead.
Well, you know, I was late joining the meeting. But I was, and maybe I missed, maybe I missed it. I didn't know if there was any anything raised again about the Horton Feedlot and overpopulation of cattle.
John, you're, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Hey, Paul, thank you. And the short answer is, yeah, Clayton Roth presented, you know, some of the concerns and we did determine a course of action as far as getting any new information and, and looking at how we could revisit that. And, and so that was, we did have that conversation, Paul, yes.
Okay, good. Apologies. I just noticed that it's almost impassable. Some of the county road up there, they've been doing quite a bit of work, so I just wanted to make sure it was addressed and sorry for taking up extra time.
Not, not at all, sir. And, and Michelle, could we make sure, there's been a couple of references to the county road work up there. I'm wondering if that's the Al Canyon Road worker, or I know we're probably starting to look at the intersection of County Road Nine and Al Canyon, you know, in relation to the, the landfill site. But I, I'd like to better understand about the, the road thing there. You know, one thing before, if, if there might be some other questions and, and all that. But I did notice on the attendee list, and I want to acknowledge that I think we have at least we have the town administrator and I'm glad she spoke, Patty Garcia. Well, we have three, at least three town trustees, Wellington Town trustees, John Gator, Ashley McDonald and Rebecca Kinney. So thanks for participating and certainly if you have any input, we're happy to receive that. And, and, and John, just to follow up, again, I'm more than happy to meet with folks or meet with you. And as we discussed, you know, earlier in January. But I wanted to acknowledge those folks that are on the, in the meeting. Are there other questions at this point, Michelle?
John Gator has his hand raised now.
There you go.
I have given you permission. Go ahead.
So I just did want to thank you again, Commissioner Kapalas, for taking the time to come out and speak with members of the community. And just to listen to concerns, it really means a lot to me as a local official to have you as our county commissioner coming out here. And did want to thank Commissioner Shattuck McValley and Commissioner Stevens for coming out as well and joining us. It's great to see the two of you and congratulations again. And I, I'm not positive, but it sounds like I think we're trying to maybe get something set up where we can sit down and chat with our board and the county commissioners, which I think would be fantastic, just so we can kind of go over some of the things that we're seeing here locally, things that we're working towards. I know there are several projects, the dams that you mentioned earlier, the, the intersection near the high school that we're kind of working together on. So would love to see us be able to continue to work towards that. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Town Trustee John Gator. I appreciate our relationship and our friendship. I, you caused me to think of a couple of other really quick things. One is that a bit of good news on the road, Highway One, leading up to Wellington before we get to the, that intersection you referred to, but the intersection of Douglas Road, Douglas Road and Highway One, we, you know, we had an update on that. But that, that traffic light, that signaling, you know, putting in the signals for that, that's going to start in, in the next few months. And, and so, so that's, I think that will help with our road safety. And, and looking forward to meeting with you and your fellow town trustees. And, you know, I, I'm somewhat, maybe I shouldn't say this, but cautiously optimistic that hopefully by summertime, maybe sooner, we can actually resume these meetings at, at the T-bar. You know, I mean, I mean, at, at this point, I assume that the T-bar inn is, went through our Level Up program and, and hope they did, and that they're able to function at the level yellow and therefore have more indoor capacity. And I know they've set up that outdoor dining area. So I'm hoping we can actually do a lot of these meetings more, more in person. And, well, enough said. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, John.
Commissioner, we do have a new question. And it's for all three of you. When will our new commissioners be holding their own meetings like this for their regions? Or will this be a team effort for a while, which she quoted is very cool?
Yeah, to, yeah, I, I see your finger there. You don't, but just as I mentioned earlier, if you have any ideas on that. But we are looking at the whole community outreach thing in terms of the commissioners. And I know that some folks have already started their own meetings and that's why Jody wants to talk about hers. Please.
I'm more than welcome to join Commissioner and go follow us monthly. I think this is great. I love hearing about the other parts of the county. It's really important to me to hear from you folks and hear about your concerns. I do have my first one. Michelle, I, I need to ask about, it's on, should I just put it on my page or how that's on the Facebook page so I can have that out? But I do have one this Saturday from eight thirty to nine thirty and my guest will be Mayor Jackie Marsh. And it will be kind of our first one and I'll be doing one. We're still setting up the date up with the mayor of, of Estes Park in about two weeks, I believe. And that will be around the lunch hour. I just have to get her to double check her schedule. And then we'll be going with the birth of mayor after that. And so I will probably, we're waiting to see, we're going to get some feedback and see how folk, how often folks, I know, want to do this. I know Commissioner Kapalas does this monthly. And again, we're having this conversation in our retreat, I think, talking about how we're going to do this together and separately. But I think all for myself and I, I won't, you know, speak for, for both of them, but I think we're all on the same page to be accessible and be out, doing outreach and connecting with the whole county and, and hearing from folks as much as possible and, and trying to share some of the things going on and hearing from every area of the county and their concerns. So I think, Michelle, if you would put that link in the chat, that would be great. Everyone's welcome, even if it's for a different area. You're always welcome to join any of those. I welcome your feedback and your, and your comments at any of those events. So thank you.
Commissioner, I just shared the link for the page where we put all of your guys' community meetings. Can check that out as, you know, as you guys get more established in, in your schedule for these types of things. So.
Thanks, Jody. Kristin, is there anything you want to add to that or?
Sure. I guess I thought we were, we're coordinating them and so I didn't know we had added some to the schedule. I wanted to make sure that I wasn't overlapping and overburdening Michelle with, with, you know. So I will clearly have some. I haven't put any on the schedule yet. It's something that I did while I was a city council member, so it's something I have every intention of continuing. Happy to also have ones with the three of us, you know, we, we talked about doing that potentially quarterly. So I'm, I'm happy to do that as well. You know, I think it's important for us to hear from folks all over the county, even though we're representing different districts. And so, but yeah, please, please stay tuned, I guess. I would say for, for what I have, would have coming up, there again, don't want to overlap John's or Jody's so we can have the support, especially while we're still doing these via Zoom. It'll be a little different story when we're actually able to meet in person, which will really be nice. But, so yes, I will be having them as well.
Yes, it is a little difficult right now because you guys want to do them on Saturdays, which is fine with me. I love these things. But we're also trying not to overlap with other elected officials that are doing Saturday, you know, a lot of Saturday meetings going on. So for folks to know that is, it's, we're, we're trying to coordinate everything so we're not overlapping with other meetings you might want to attend. And it's definitely a, an in-progress thing right now.
Yeah, well said, everyone. And, and so that's, that's our goal. And we just want to make sure we're coordinating as much as possible. And, you know, post, I, I, again, I, I could think I can say this, post-COVID nineteen pandemic, you know, when I started doing these things, they were, I, I think I was doing five a month. And that's because like the, we've consolidated some of these, you know, because it's all virtual. But I would do a, you know, one in Laporte, you know, for folks up there, you know, up the canyons and in the town of Laporte. And then I would, I would do a Fort Collins one. And, and then we would even do a, you know, we would do one in over in Waverly and then kind of separate with. And actually, I'd even go up to Buckeye. But, so we have to navigate all of that while we're in, you know, doing virtual. And at, when the time comes when we're able to do more of this in person. So I, I wanted to, maybe some other questions, but, you know, folks might be ready to move on. But I did want to make a couple of comments. So I think it was Fire Chief, Gary Green, who suggested that at the next meeting, and, and maybe Michelle, you and I can discuss how to do that, that we could have someone from the state demographers, state demographers office to give us an update on, on, on some of the recent population economic trends. We can also do that, I think, within our own shop, you know, with somebody from our economic and workforce development. But that was one request for the next meeting and that is to have someone from the state demographer, demographers office. And we can follow up on that and see whether that would be the state demographer, state demographer herself or, or perhaps somebody from that office. And if that's not possible, go ahead, Michelle, please.
I'm sorry. I know the state demographer, they're doing a lot of census stuff right now. So it might have to be something we push out until they're kind of through getting numbers to the districts and, and the counties and the municipalities. But I just wanted to throw that out there that we might have to push it out a little bit until maybe later spring.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I, I think we could still, you know, make the ask and then they could tell us that they're really overburdened with the, the work that needs to be done on the census. And, and again, the fallback there, and I don't know if it's so much of a fallback, is that we could ask folks from our, our, our data analysis, folks from our economic and workforce development to come and give us an update. You know, the last time we had, we get that report that shows a lot of interesting demographics. That was in two thousand and nineteen. We haven't been able to, you know, do that again with hot paper copies and all that. But we can, we can also address the issue, I think, in-house. But we'll start with the state demographers and then, and then, Michelle, we can figure out who the best person is. You know, to provide an update. The, the second thing I wanted to put out there, colleagues and friends, is would it be helpful to have, to ask the the, the new director, the Solid Waste Director, I think his name is, is it Dwayne, Dwayne Hany or something like that? Anyway, would it be helpful to have that person come and, and introduce themselves and give an update on, on the, the solid waste recovery efforts? So I, I'll put that out there and, and that's a suggestion unless somebody says, oh, no, gosh, no. I'll follow up on that. And then I don't know whether, for, maybe, and that's sufficient. But whether or not folks would be interested in having someone from the Public Health Department give us the latest and greatest news. You know, early March, where we are with vaccinations and, and metrics, you know, in terms of keeping people healthy and safe. We could also ask Tom Gonzalez or someone from his office to participate. So those are three, I think, three ideas. And I, I do know that Tom Gonzalez agreed to participate in our February twenty-fifth Red Feather Lakes Community Conversation. So Tom will be there and Jody, yeah.
I just, thank you, Commissioner. I just want to remind everybody that this Friday, or today, actually, at the Lammerton County Department of Health is doing a online forum regarding the vaccines from, I believe, four thirty to five thirty. And we'll be taking questions and getting updates. And we found out, he announced that, I think, Tuesday. And so try and get the word out, but it'll be a really great way to get an update and hear and ask your questions. I believe it's going to be, it's on Facebook, but also it's on the website, right, to how to sign up or how to find that. So I don't know if you can, Michelle, I keep asking you to put things in, but I think that would be really important. If you have questions, there is an opportunity today starting at four. But I think that would be really important. If you have questions, there is an opportunity today starting at four 30. And it will be Director Gonzalez and his staff. And I think it'd be really, really important and great information. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. I'm glad you brought that up. And I think that there was also, in addition to an article in the, in the Colorado and at least today, at least the electronic version about the affordable housing survey. I think there was also an article about the, the forum, the COVID-19 vaccine information forum that, that Jody referenced. So if you, if you get the newspaper, please, please check that out. And again, to go back to the housing thing, I, I really, really hope that folks from the Wellington area, the rural areas will spread the word and, and participate in that survey. Cause we'll do a better job if we know, you know, what, what the issues are for folks and, and what are some ideas on how to solve those issues or address them. But we have a couple of things in the Q and A, Michelle. Oh. Oh.
You're muted, Michelle. Yep. Sorry. I'm, Barb, I'm looking for the link right now. I'm, I'm working on it.
And, and Barb, there should be, I don't know if you guys can access the Colorado and it should be in there as well. But, but I'm sure Michelle will find it. And, but yeah, that's, that's this afternoon.
I'm looking for it. I'm actually about ready to text my counterpart at the health department right now.
Jody, you're, you're muted. So I can't, I can't lip read. You're muted.
I'm, I'm, Michelle, I'm going to send you the link they sent me last night.
That's her.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's, um, if that's a peddles for us to, to attend, but.
Sorry, folks. Was it via email, Jody? You're muted again.
Sorry. Yes, it was via email.
Oh, there it is. Okay, here we go. I found it. All in information. Okay, I'm going to check it, see what the link does. Okay, so I am going to, I will push this out right now. Thank you. Thank you, Jody.
Yeah. And I think we'll, I think we'll begin to wrap up here. I noticing that Barb is on the call. Nice to hear from you. But living up the canyon, I know that one of the issues up there was the Cameron Peak Fire did a lot of damage on the, the Century Link lines, phone lines. And so folks have been without landline service for quite a while. The update that we received recently is that they got all the replacement materials. They should have received them by now. And hopefully that problem will get addressed. But in the meantime, we're trying to find out if there's a way to deploy a mobile wifi unit of the fire station there. But, but again, this has been going on for months. So we've been, I, I would think Century Link has a responsibility to, you know, provide a backup. But it looks like some folks have been without phone line service for a while. I just wanted to mention that. So unless there's anything else.
Michelle, it looks like someone has their hand up. Do we want to take that question?
Yes, please, of course.
All right, Daniel. I have given you permission. Now you just need to unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. Is that working better now?
That's working better now. Thank you.
Just a minute.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, now everything's working. I just had a quick inquiry for all three commissioners in regards to that Horton Feedlot issue. You know, all the neighbors were pretty much denied review and appeal to that use by right determination. We'd like to definitely have that revisited if all possible. Or any determination thus far provided by the planning department.
Thank you, Daniel. Commissioners, anything you want to add?
Oh, thank you, Daniel. I appreciate your comment. And as we stated earlier, we'll, you know, we'll look at what our options are. And I think your son, well, Clayton will provide us with more. You know, some things in writing, we'll, we'll go from there. But your, your request is very specific, revisiting the use by right determination. And I, I need to make, I need to go back and, and it's not that simple, but, but maybe it is and we'll find out.
Thank you very much.
And I just wanted to say, if that's all right, John, that, thank you, Daniel. And, and I didn't respond last time Clayton spoke, but just we're, we are aware of the issues, but we're, we'll have Clayton write us a, an email that can be forwarded. And being fairly new, I don't know what we need to do, but we're certainly aware of the issue. And we, we understand the difficulties that you and your family are having. And so I think we'll, we'll kind of talk with staff about the, you know, best way that we can address some of the issues that, that you're facing. So, but I appreciate you coming on and talking to us about, about that and keeping that in our, fresh in our minds. Because it is something that, you know, I've, I, I learned about over the past couple of months and, and that I'd like to address and figure out how to, how to give you some, some resolution on this issue, which I know that you've been seeking.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you coming and saying this. And we're, we're definitely welcoming the conversation we can have as all three of us as commissioners. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, everybody is very nice to each other. That's good. We need more kindness and civility with each other. So thank you all. I don't think there are other questions. I hope we've adequately addressed things and we will look towards having, you know, some information about demographics, population, economic information. We will invite the new director of our solid waste department to come. And, and I'll give some thought to, you know, we could also invite Tom Gonzalez or somebody from the health department. I mean, that by March 4th, hopefully we've gotten through phase one, B1. You know, and all the teachers have been vaccinated, you know, broader swath of folks that are older adults have been vaccinated and all the frontline folks, and that our numbers continue to be good as far as hospitalizations. And, you know, we did exceed 200. We're at 201 deaths. So there are folks that are really impacted by this. And we're also very cognizant of the equity issue in terms of vaccinations. And, and so we're trying to, we, we have hired a new person, outreach person that is reaching out to certain communities, Latinx communities, et cetera, to make sure that folks are being vaccinated. So with that said, Michelle, thank you very much. As always, thank you to baby Yoda. I'm glad that baby Yoda is with us. Thank you, Commissioner Shattuck McNally and Stevens. And I really appreciate you guys taking the time. And I think this is good. And we need to just talk it through some more and make sure we're all, you know, working together on how do we connect with folks. I wish you all a good day and please take care. Until next time.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thanks for coming out today.